Jason, tell me when Mr. Feyman is ready.
Okay.
Super, okay. Perfect. So who's gonna give me the sign? Alrighty. Okay, well, I've gotten the sign, so I want to welcome everyone to our broadband town hall meeting. It is a little bit of unconventional meeting, certainly with everything that's going on. Appreciate everybody's attempt to social distance and wear your masks, and I will try to do this the whole time wearing this mask, so... But we do appreciate your interest particularly on this topic, and so... And we have three really main agenda items that we want to cover. First, we want to give everyone a brief overview of some of the actions and some of the, I guess, the things that have got us to this point, particularly on broadband in Washington County. So the second thing we want to do is we want to hear from Mr. Evan Feyman. And Mr. Feyman is, I think his official title is the Commonwealth Chief Broadband Advisor. He'll introduce himself in a little while. He's kind of running point for the Commonwealth of Virginia on this issue of broadband. But Evan is no stranger to Washington County. He used to be, I believe, I can't remember his title, Executive Director of the Tobacco Commission, so he knows our region, he knows southwest Virginia well. And then the third thing, of course, is we want to hear from citizens if you have comments. One of the good thi... One of the things I was thinking about driving up here about broadband in particular, you know, we're past the phase where we have to make a case for the need for broadband. So this is not so much as a town hall or a discussion about the fact that we need it. We all know we need it, right? Economic development, quality of life, and what has most recently just brought this topic to the forefront has been the situation with our kids and schools, and so many of them having to do virtual school and remote learning. And I tell you, if you were not a proponent for the need, or you didn't realize there was an issue with us in Washington County not having adequate broadband, boy, it became real evident when you had kids at home that were struggling and couldn't do their homework, couldn't get someplace. I... And I'm a little bit off script already, but I tell you, and we have all... All of us supervisors are getting these phone calls, have gotten these phone calls. But I was in Mendota not too long ago when the kids were all at home, and I drove by the community center, and there were kids outside on the ground, in the foyer, on the stoop with their stuff laid out, because that's the only place, that community center, that's the only place that had broadband. And so, you know, so it is, it's become something again, it's not a matter of convenience, but it certainly economic development. I know I've had some businesses that have left my district because they didn't like broadband, but it's so, so important. So anyway, before we get going, I do want to make some introductions. First of all, and some notes, kind of, I don't want to forget at the end. Thank you, Mr. Berry and the team at the county for setting this up. We appreciate it so much. By the way, we're also, it is ironic that we are broadcasting this on YouTube, considering some of our constituent residents don't have broadband, but there's a lot, a lot of folks that were interested in this topic and we heard from and are watching. So I want to thank them as well for being online. We actually have created an advisory board, a committee. It was done prior, and former supervisor Copenhagen is here, who was instrumental in setting that up. And this is a group within the county, folks that are interested in this topic and have come together. So let me introduce them really quick. It's Amanda Bailey from the Public Library, Jason Lester, the School System IT Lead, Ernie Briganza, who's a citizen member, Keith Lloyd, who heads up IT for the county, Whitney Saluzniak, who does our economic development, Tyler Lester from Senator Pillion's office, Jay Combs from Delegate O'Quinn's office, Laura Brevins from Senator Kane's office, US Senator Kane, Shane Clemm from US Senator Warner's office, John Bevver from Congressman Griffith's office, and then, of course, myself and Wayne Stevens. So I say all that to say, and which is very germane to this topic of broadband, if we're going to solve this topic in our community, it's not a Board of Supervisors and schools, we need everybody, right? We need the folks at the federal level, the state level, all of us kind of on the boat rowing in the same direction to try to tackle this issue. So the last introductions I want to make is our Board of Supervisors. And it's interesting that I just realized, all of them are here because it's that important. You've got Mike Rush, who Connerock area, obviously a big deal. We've got Charlie Hargus, we've got Wayne Stevens, Randy Penning, our Vice Chair, who has a lot of constituents in his area with a big need, Dwayne Ball, our Chairman, and Phil McCall. So we're all here and we're all in. So, alright. With that, the next thing I want to do is just go over a little bit of timeline, kind of what, where we've gotten, what we've done to get us to where we are today. So let me give you, and I'll try to go through these quickly, but I think it is important to the discussion. And I believe Mr. Feyman is hearing us, he's not quite on yet, but I think it's important for him as well. So one of the things, if we started out in November 2017, where we prepared, let's see if I can do this, my glasses fog up with this mask, so, yeah, anyway. November 2017, we started out, we prepared our first broadband grant. We partnered with CenturyLink and the Tobacco Commission. Unfortunately, that grant was not submitted due to project scope changes by CenturyLink a few days before the deadline. Big disappointment, big learning curve. Fall 2018, county participants participated in a southwest Virginia broadband needs assessment with the regions and the three planning districts, and that was published in May of 2019, which identified, there's other pockets, but identified primarily Mendota, Gladespring, Damascus as specific communities within the county that had the largest needs. Then in September 2019, the county submitted a Virginia telecommunications initiative application, known as VIDA, a state application for some funding, and the purpose of that grant was for the Mendota broadband expansion project. We were going to partner with Point Broadband. The grant request for was one and a half million dollars, and it was going to provide 681 passable structures in a rural area, primarily around Mendota, access to broadband. So that would have been a game changer for, you know, the northwest part of the county. Unfortunately, we barely missed the scoring criteria. I think the total project cost was going to be about $2.6 million, and we didn't get that grant. Well, the main reason we didn't get the grant was because of the lack of businesses, per se, located in that area. We didn't have enough points there. And also, we found out, and it really highlighted the need for economic development as well as kind of collaborative projects. So we tried again. August 2020, we submitted another grant to VIDA, and this time, we collaborated with the Mount Rogers Planning District. The grant is more of, we were part of a regional effort with Smith and with counties, and we actually requested $7.8 million over, and it would be implemented over three phases. Within this, we focused on the communities of, we shifted, right? Damascus, Connerock, Karine Cove, Taylor's Valley, Widener Valley, Ray Valley, and Lodi. So this would consist of 231 miles of fiber, but the exciting thing is that would impact 2,745 passable structures. So we are keeping our fingers crossed. We hope to hear, that's an August 2020 submission, we hope to hear soon on that particular grant, and that would be a game changer in some of those communities. Next thing, take us to this month, October 2020. The County Cares Act Task Force approved the purchase of seven Wi-Fi hotspots in a box, and these extend secure Wi-Fi in areas where there is some fiber, right? So these are kind of remote, mobile, think of them as just really big MiFi, or again, Wi-Fi in a box. And it, and they extend, or they amplify, if you will, Wi-Fi, like 600 feet beyond the source, so... And you may have seen some things in the paper about this, that we have, we actually deployed several of these, I think seven all across the county, so permanently deployed, so... And it helps some, it helps some in some locations, so... And most of these, of course, were community centers, et cetera. So, next steps, one more thing beyond, and then we'll get to Mr. Feyman. One of the things we realized really quickly, and don't get into the details, is we need to do a better job of exactly knowing what the need is and doing, so we have, we are looking at procuring or engaging someone to do a countywide strategic plan slash needs assessment. So in other words, we want to know where exactly are we lacking? Where are these, they call them passable structures, are these homes that don't have access to broadband? And more importantly, what is an estimate cost, right, per home? So, and that's part of the problem with rural broadband, right? If there's a cluster of homes, it's obviously cheaper to provide them access, and there are homes that, you know, there's a lot of space, or they're very remote, right? So, anyway, that's where we are. So that kind of gives you, you know, we, and here's the, and before I introduce Mr. Feyman, we're doing some things, but I tell you, this is such a big deal. This is such a big need, and we're talking, I mean, I was talking to one parent, you know, and they've got kids today in elementary school, and who knows what's going to happen with this pandemic? And even beyond, let's say all our kids go to school, you know, there are some classes and some courses, particularly when you get to high school, that are only offered online just because of the nature of the county, county that we are. I remember my son at John Battle High School could not take AP Chemistry at school, so he had to take it online. Fortunately, we live somewhere where we have access to broadband, he was able to take that course. So, and again, I don't need to make the case here, but, so then we, as kind of collectively as a county and as supervisors, said, what else can we do? What can we do, even to the point that we're willing to make some investments at the county level? So we wanted, but with that, we know that there's a lot of smart people around the Commonwealth and in the country that are dealing with this issue and talking about it. The good thing is, yes, resources are limited, but the silver lining there is a lot of people are talking about it, a lot of smart people are coming up with some good ideas, and we thought we had a very good resource in Mr. Feyman, Mr. Evan Feyman again, who's kind of leading the charge. And so everything that I've said, and none of it, I'm sure, is a surprise to Evan. And so with that, we want to move into the next part of our town halls. We want to ask him a couple of questions, and hopefully, he will expel on that, but we want to talk about a couple of things. Number one is, let's make sure we know of all of the broadband funding opportunities, right? So we have taken advantage of some state ones, the Cares Act, of course, those were federal dollars that came to the state, right? But we want to be really aware that if there's an opportunity out there and we're eligible, we want to make sure our hat, our name is in the hat. And then the second thing is, we want to hear from Mr. Feyman, if he can talk to us about some best practices, particularly local governments, what can we do? And there are some unique things out there he'll get into, folks have formed authorities and partnerships and all kinds of things. There's a lot of stuff going on, and we hope that he can sort of give us some direction and some education there. So Evan, you are on. Can you hear us? Yes, sir, we can see and hear you. Can you hear me? Evan, thank you particularly, I know it's past five o'clock. Thank you. Well, thank you very, very much for being here, and like I mentioned before, you are no stranger to Washington County, and we worked on a lot of projects together when you were over the Tobacco Commission, so we are anxious to hear from you. I think you, you heard my kind of lead-up questions?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
For much of southwest Virginia. The broadband challenge is pretty great, by the way, I mean, large. The governor set a goal of universal broadband coverage in no more than 10 years, and he set that goal in the summer of 2018. And at that point, we knew we had about 660,000 Virginians who didn't have access to broadband infrastructure, spread out over right around a half a million home business locations. We've been able to chop away at that pretty aggressively. Commonwealth has made around 108,000 home business connections, and the private sector and the federal government, thank you, SARS, but has supported about another 42, most of that through FCC and USDA grants. And so we're still looking at about 350,000, all these are rounded numbers, they just happen to land right on those flat figures, but right around 350,000 home business connections left to make. There are a couple of different ways the Commonwealth is doing its work to support broadband expansion. The first is policy changes, so we, within the executive branch and in partnership with the General Assembly, are changing the way the Commonwealth's government works to make it easier, cheaper, faster, better to deploy broadband. There's a couple of ways in which we've done that, could have been really successful. One I'll highlight is our utility leverage pilot. This is a program that allows AppCo and Dominion, AppCo's really the relevant actor for y'all, to, when they improve their own electrical grids, that requires them to install basically a broadband network inside the grid. The way the regulations worked before was, they could only install just enough broadband capacity to serve their own substations and equipment. Anything more than that, they had to eat the cost of, and they couldn't do anything with. Now we've changed the law to say, and it's a little more complicated than this, but basically, you can pull a thicker cable and then lease that extra fiber capacity to internet service providers for the purposes of serving unserved folks. That was, the first one of those was done with AppCo in Grayson County, not too far from y'all. And, you know, Grayson has all the challenges Washington County has and a number fewer assets, and they are going to be able to get to universal coverage here in the next year or so. So it's pretty exciting, and we're looking forward to that program growing. So we're making policy changes, that's number one. Number two, we're standing up, I mean, stood up, a local government assistance and planning team inside the state broadband team. And so the first big thing that the broadband team has done there is create a toolkit for local leaders, and so if you haven't gone to Commonwealth Connect, all one word, dot Virginia, all spelled out, dot gov, I don't know why every web address in state government has to be alone, but that's the way, that's where we are, but you head to that website and you can see a toolkit for local broadband leaders. That gives you a step-by-step guide to how to go from what the heck's broadband and why do we need it, to having your celebratory party because everybody's online. Additionally, we are here to help you and be your advisors. You know, I'm excited to hear, Saul, that y'all are considering taking on a consultant to help you do some scoping work. Be cautious and careful. There are a number of good broadband consultants, and there are a number of bad ones. And I've seen a number of Virginia communities get taken for a ride, spend tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars and be left with very little to show for it. So I would say, reach out to my team first and make sure that you're, we're all the way connected with you on what you're doing and what the scope of work is for that consultant. The third thing that we're doing is making capital grants to public-private partnerships to actually build the infrastructure out. And that's really important, because the, at the end of the day, the reason the private sector hasn't gone out and met this demand, right, there's hundreds of thousands of people who'd like to be paying customers, it's a natural question to say, why hasn't the market gone and served those folks? And the answer is that when population gets too dispersed, when you don't have enough density, the amount of money that you need to spend on infrastructure to get those folks online is greater than the return you'd be able to get from their monthly bills. You know, a mile of fiber in Arlington costs basically the same amount as a mile of fiber in Allegheny, but you can get a ton of paying customers in Arlington, far fewer in Allegheny. So the challenge you've got is the dispersed population. By making those capital grants to buy down effectively for the private sector, the cost of that infrastructure, you can make it profitable, or at least cost-effective, to serve folks out in areas where there's a lot less density. So that's sort of the third bucket, and then supporting all of that is what we call the Commonwealth Connect Coalition, which is an organization of now more than 120 different companies and nonprofits that have all come together to say, we absolutely must get to universal broadband coverage, and we absolutely must see the General Assembly fully fund that effort. You know, y'all have great representation in Washington County in the General Assembly, and I'm happy to report that, you know, the entire southwest delegation frankly has been, have been champions for rural broadband in the General Assembly, and they fight hard for it. In fact, that utility leverage bill that I mentioned was sponsored by Israel O'Quinn. The things that you want to think about in terms of funding are, one, VADA, that's the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative, that's a statewide effort that is run through the Department of Housing and Community Development, two, the Tobacco Commission, the last mile broadband program lives in the southwest economic development committee's purview, and so they accept applications basically twice a year. Three, ARC, y'all are in the ARC footprint, that's the Appalachian Regional Commission, that's federal. Four, there's both USDA and FCC federal programs, we'll make sure, unfortunately, they are not as interested in local participation. We think our public-private partnership model is really strong, it's one of the reasons we actually get right around five times as much bang for our buck as the feds do, and a big part of that is the inclusion of local governments. The USDA and FCC programs do not involve the locality, but that doesn't mean that y'all shouldn't be a part of the conversation, you've just got to work with the ISP applicants to make sure that what they're doing is in keeping with the public policy that y'all want to pursue and that we want to support you in pursuing. The last one we'll talk about is the Cares Act, and this is very time-limited for now, we're hoping the feds will extend that deadline, but the county should have gotten the Cares Act allocation, I think actually two, and then additionally, we just announced, the money just freed up about two and a half weeks ago, our fast-track broadband program, and I saw, I think Jason got me an application in maybe yesterday or the day before for some work. Unfortunately, all the work under that program has to be completed by the end of the calendar year, which is a very tight timeframe for broadband projects, but we're going to review y'all's Cares Act funding projects as fast as we can. In terms of best practices, the most important thing is to make sure that you're always planning toward universal coverage. As, you know, as Saul noted, it's a lot cheaper to serve a cluster than it is to serve one-offs. The problem is, let's say you got, you know, five households here, and then five more scattered around it. To serve the whole area may cost $100,000. To just serve those five households in a cluster might only cost $10,000. Well, if you just spend the 10 and get those five online, now you're going to spend 90 to get five more online, where you could have gotten all 10 online for $100,000 at the outset. So you got to, you got to be very wary of cherry picking, and, you know, the bottom line of an internet service provider's thinking is going to be, they're going to want to go get as many clusters as they can and not worry about the folks that are more isolated. If you just let that happen, it's going to, it's going to get a lot more costly and a lot more difficult to get the remainder of your citizens online. So you got to make sure you're always, it's okay to phase it, but you've got to make sure you're always planning toward that universal coverage. In terms of technology, the two technologies that are really robust and ripe for home or business broadband connections right now are fiber to the home, which is exactly what it sounds like, or fixed wireless. Now, that's not your cellphone, that is like old TVs to be, where there's an antenna on the structure and a transmitter is pointed directly at your antenna. The reason for that is that when transmitters and receivers know where each other are, you can do a much more robust signal, and so your data volume can get very high. It's also true that most fixed wireless companies don't set you an annual data or a monthly data cap, so you can do your Zoom calls like this as much as you want, you don't need to worry about getting some data overage. We are taking a look at satellites, at the new satellite service. Old satellite service has a lot of problems, it's very expensive, latency, et cetera. We're taking a look at the new lower forward satellite service. There is some promise there, but it's years away, and they have a lot of problems they need to solve between now and then. I know that there are a couple of communities in southwest that are part of the new Starlink pilot, we're going to see how that looks, but even right now, when it's heavily subsidized and they're not making a profit, they're charging $500 to sign up and then 100 bucks a month, which is a pretty steep swing for a lot of families. The other thing that's technologically coming down the highway that a lot of folks are thinking about is 5G. The thing to know for sure about that is, 5G is not like the transition from 3G to 4G or from 4G to 4G LTE. In those instances, basically, it was about changing out the transmitters on the existing towers and then changing out folks' phones. 5G is a lot more like overgrown Wi-Fi than like the big macro cellular towers that we've seen before. I think it's very unlikely that there's going to be true 5G service outside of dense urban areas anytime in the next several years. To make 5G work, for example, in downtown Richmond, there needs to be a transmitter basically every other block. The economics of that only work when there's a boatload of customers who are going to use it. We'll eventually have it down the interstate highways and in our dense urban areas, but I think it'll be a long time before there's anything that looks like true 5G, even in the suburbs, let alone in rural Virginia. And in any event, every one of those transmitters needs to sit on a fiber connection, and so you got to have a big, robust, built-out fiber network to even think about deploying 5G. So there is no technological white knight who's going to gallop in and save us, it's up to us, it's up to the Commonwealth, it's up to local governments, and we're going to do our best to make the best of what the federal government is doing, which, you know, frankly, is not that much, and not that great, and not that fast. That's all right, we're used to that, and we're dealing with the federal government, they're friendly, and they've got a lot of money, which we like. Moving forward, we're on track for the governor's goal. Unfortunately, at the time, the governor's very ambitious goal, which is get everybody online by 2028, seemed like a great turn of events. COVID has proven to us that we need to go a lot faster, we need to do a lot more. Fortunately, the General Assembly stepped up during this special session, and they allocated us $50 million toward the VADA program, and then additionally, the governor found this $30 million in Cares Act. So we're going to be investing a record $80 million in state money, we're going to leverage at least that much private sector and local money to deploy broadband this year, we're really excited about that, but there remains a lot more to do. We're really excited about that, but there remains a lot more to do. I know I just covered a whole lot really quickly. The other thing that I just want to make really clear before we get into Q and A is that this is hard. There is no cookie cutter approach. Every single locality is a custom build because every place is different. Every place has different assets, different ISPs, different settlement patterns. We are here to help. If you've ever got a question and you can't figure out the answer, shoot me a note. I or somebody on my team will get right back to you. You know, we're all working kind of all this time these days and, you know, it may take a day or two to get back to you, but I swear to you, we will. And we don't want you to ever feel like you're out on a limb or you're doing something on your own because that's, that's not the case. We're here to help and we really want to offer valuable service. And so, you know, that's where we are. We're committed to getting this done and I'm happy to take any questions.
Sure. And thank you, Evan, for that guidance. I know I heard a few things. I thought it's good counsel around making sure we engage with someone reputable, right, to do our needs assessment. So, certainly, we will leverage you all for that as well and appreciate the little update on 5G because I've seen a lot of, I've seen a few things written about that that will ultimately be the solution for rural broadband in America. But, but, but your point is exactly right too about the whole 2028. I think, I guess at the time, it was a good ambitious goal and the timing seemed reasonable, but COVID has changed, has changed, obviously changed everything. And also too, before we get into some questions, and I think sometimes, because I get, I get these messages on Facebook and I get people to ask, and I think it's a point that most of you probably already understand, so I don't want to be, don't want to insult anybody's intelligence, be too, too obvious, but some folks may not. Maybe some folks listening, the fact that, you know, these are all private, private organizations that we're working with, right, that are going to build out this infrastructure and ultimately charge these households for us to use their service. So, and that's a really important point that, you know, that if it doesn't cash flow for them, that they're, they don't have a whole lot of interest. And so, that's where you see government stepping in to help fund some of this infrastructure or at least subsidize the cost of this infrastructure because otherwise, we would never get it, right? If it was, if it was money, if there was money to be made, they would already be in these communities. And I know sometimes folks get frustrated, they talked to me about that, but the reality of it is, we can't force these companies to do this. Now, if we subsidize the infrastructure to the degree that, that it makes sense, and I know there's something backwards about that, that doesn't quite feel right, but conversely, we have folks, particularly the kids that need. So, it's, it's, it's an odd problem. Like Evan said, it's a difficult problem and, but, but we all, I think we're all in agreement that it's something that needs to be addressed. So, I hope that helped for some, some folks because it is fairly, fairly complex. I also appreciate too, hearing from, hearing from you, Evan, about there's no white knights when it comes to technology and that we have to get our hands dirty and leverage every particular funding opportunity. We did mention too, Mr. Berry, that we do have an application for this fast-track CARES Act that Evan just mentioned. We do have one for that and it's not huge. I think it's around $300 and something thousand. Am I right? I'm not, okay. And it affects about 75 homes and I think three businesses, but it's something. I'll tell you what else too, and I never thought about it until I heard you say, Evan, the fact about making sure that these, that we don't get cherry picked, if you will. And that's a great, that's a great point, some good guidance. Okay. Anyway, that's what I got out of it. Thank you. Questions? And I, I think normally, we would have a town hall. I think, is this, both of these work? Do we have any questions that we want to pose either to the county or to Mr. Feynman? Yeah, come, come on up and, and if you're part of a particular group like the school board or an, or an authority or something, go ahead and mention that too. I think it'd be good for Evan to know that.
Thank you. My name is Donald Williams.
Well, can we hear you? Do we need to give him this?
Back here.
Oh, you can hear him?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Don.
My name is Donald Williams. I'm a citizen, not a member of any particular board. I have, you answered most of my questions that I had, but I have three left. I read about the Virginia has a broadband toolkit. Is that, what is that and is that available?
That, well, thank you, Mr. Williams. That's absolutely available. You go to the website, www dot Commonwealth Connect, all one word, dot Virginia, all spelled out, dot gov. And there's a ton of resources there. You can read reports about what we're doing. You can read, you can look at some of our COVID resources. You can see a variety of different federal programs and then included in, and state programs and included in that, those resources are our broadband toolkit. And so, I'd encourage you, it's, we try to make that a readable document. You know, often you get caught up in kind of report speak. And so, we try to use just plain language and be straightforward as we possibly could in that document. I can't promise it's going to be a bestseller, but it will get across everything you need to know.
Okay. Thank you. Another question, I read about some public libraries loan Wi-Fi hotspots. Is that common around our area?
I can't speak specifically to y'all's libraries. Many libraries do do that and we're looking at whether or not we can find some money to expand that. The worst thing about this COVID crisis is that just as we need to be doing more, the state and our partners and local government have less. You know, we don't, unlike the federal government, we can't run a deficit. So, if we don't have the money in the bank, we don't have it to spend on program. That said, you know, we're looking hard at that side of the coin. Most of what we talked about here tonight has been the infrastructure access problem, but there's really two kinds of broadband problems. There's the access problem when you don't have enough infrastructure and then there's affordability. And so, letting people check out for free from the library, a mobile hotspot isn't perfect, but it will at least get somebody cellular level service at their home, as long as their home is somewhere that can get cell service. I will also mention, included in this CARES Act eligibility is not just broadband, but expansion of cellular service as well. That will require some fast action from local governments. If you're going to put up a new tower, you know, permitting and siting is tough, but if you can move that along the same track and get us an application in, we'll, I'll tell you, we'll, we'll fund it. We've, we've allocated about half of that 30 million in the last two weeks though. So, if you're going to move that way, move, move quickly.
Will broadband be able to be included in the community development block grants?
Yes. You can, some, well, so I should, I should clarify. Some activities related to broadband are eligible expenditures for CDBG or the Community Development Block Grants. The, you, you can't do kind of this last mile traditional infrastructure project, but what you can do is recover your costs around planning and coordination. And so, you know, if y'all need an extra staff person at the county, we're going to help cover some of the costs of this needs assessment that you're doing, that is, that is eligible for CDBG funding.
As I understand it, the Virginia legislation was for private development of the broadband system. And now, we're looking at Virginia grants to be in association with private developer so that the last mile can be achieved. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes. The model that we've embraced is a public-private partnership model and there's, there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, we want to be really clear that when we make these grants to build these networks, that yes, we are leaving the upside value to the private sector, but we're also allowing them to assume all the risk. One of the last things we'd want to do is fund a project and then wind up having that be a net drain on a local government's books moving forward that that government didn't anticipate. We've done enough to harm local government budgets in Richmond. We don't need to do more and I certainly don't want to be a part of that. And so, that's, that's the reason that model is the one we're pursuing. There are some situations in which a publicly-run or municipal broadband network can make sense, but those, more often than not, that's not the case. It's more of a special case when a municipal network is the, is the right approach.
Mr. Feynman, I want to thank you for meeting with us and being on our Zoom presentation. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you for your question, sir. I wish I could be there in, in public, but the Commonwealth has asked state employees not to travel any more than absolutely necessary and y'all were kind enough to let me zoom in this evening.
Thank you, Don. That's a good, very good questions. Piggyback on something Don mentioned, Evan talked to us about, and you kind of alluded about it in terms of municipalities, right, having kind of broadband. We're hearing about broadband authorities. What are those, what are those, a newly formed, right? Not necessarily even utilities, but as appendages or parts of utilities, but explain those and any benefits to Washington County?
Sure, happy to. Well, you and I spent a fair amount of time dealing with the sale of an authority-owned broadband network. That was the old BBU network that was acquired by then Sunset, now Point. That, under the current law, a local government cannot establish its own broadband network as the government without jumping through many, many, many hoops that make it really not worth doing. However, under the Wireless Services Authorities Act, a local government or a group of local governments can create a broadband authority that can basically act like a private sector company. It can charge what rates it will, it can raise money, and it can spend that money and deliver middle mile or last mile service. And in a certain set of localities, that will make some sense. In general though, where that'll be valuable is going to be in dense localities that establish a network for the purposes of trying to solve the affordability challenge. So, you know, that'll require some subsidy, but like, for example, we, we did a CARES Act grant to build, to build a couple of towers, to lay some fiber, to build a network so that there can be a, a public wireless network in Martinsville, but right just in downtown, you know, in the, in the city itself. And they'll be able to get their schoolkids online who live in the city, as well as some of their low-income residents. Now, that's going to cost them every year to run that network and it, you know, they have the benefit of being a city. So, everybody in the city is right there and they can, they can serve all those folks with relatively little investment in infrastructure. That's a lot harder when you start talking about a county the size of Washington County. You know, you'd need many, many, many towers, hundreds of miles of fiber, and you'd be spending a heck of a lot of money on customer service and in-home equipment and all the rest of that. It makes much more sense to let the folks who are enjoying the economies of scale that the big network providers have, whether they're for-profit or nonprofit. I mean, just to the, to the west, y'all, you've got Scott County Telephone and they're a nonprofit telephone cooperative that does wonderful work getting folks online. And then north and inland county, you've got Point Broadband and they're, they're for-profit. It's also doing great work getting folks online. There's no, there's no one model, but, you know, as I said, each locality has different assets, different aspects and different settlement patterns and that's why every solution is a custom solution.
Right. And then, and then also appreciate your comment about cell service because in a lot of the areas that we don't have broadband, we also don't have cell service. And that becomes a huge public safety issue. I know in my district, when we had all those fires a few years ago up in Mendota, folks didn't have, of course, they didn't have broadband, they didn't have cell service, they didn't have anything. And so, and, you know, it's not the answer, but at least somebody with cell service and unlimited data can, can have a Wi-Fi.
You can do something. You couldn't very easily do what we're doing right now.
Right.
Which is, which is a challenge for kids' education, but you can do something. And that's a heck of a lot better than nothing while we're trying to get true broadband to everybody.
And to that point, it's really interesting, Evan, when we formed this, it's technically called a telecommunications committee. I think that was a concern that former supervisor Copenhaver had. He had just generally dealing with, and so that, with, with these kinds of technologies, not just broadband's right, the biggest, biggest one in the room, if you will, but, but there's other issues as well. So, all right, well, thank you. Good comments, good questions. Okay, any other, what other questions? And yes, come on up if you're not too shy or you can yell them at me here. And these are not just questions, they're also comments as well, so feel free to...
And I, I guess my question is about what is broadband? Because we live out on the North Fork, have, you know, very close to the Russell County line. As I understand it, we have broadband because we have DSL. It is inconsistent, it's unreliable. My neighbor has lost his job because he can't work there. I myself, back in July, sat in my neighbor's yard to do work. So, that's, I guess my first question is where we're talking about bringing broadband in, and I understand that some people don't even have that, but it's still not effective for people who are trying to do work, do school, do that type of thing.
And who's the provider if you, if you're comfortable?
CenturyLink.
CenturyLink, yeah. So, that's, that's, I mean, Evan, do you want to comment?
Sure.
I can't comment on a provider per se, but that's a great question, right? So, we're talking about folks that don't have broadband, but in some cases, it's kind of like the satellite option. It's an option, but it's a terribly expensive and not very good option.
Exactly. It's a, it's a great question. And ma'am, what's your name?
My name's Lynn Manwiler.
Lynn?
Lynn.
Lynn, well, thank you for your question and thank you for, for coming out to the town hall this evening. First of all, DSL is not broadband. The Commonwealth defines broadband as a technology that can achieve reliably minimum speeds of 25 megabits per second download and three megabits per second upload. And frankly, most of what we're building soars over that threshold. CenturyLink, in a grave error during the Recovery Act, the feds spent a lot of money and CenturyLink got a bunch of it, to build DSL out everywhere, even when we knew that was not a technology that was going to work very well. CenturyLink, to their credit, is spending a lot of money and time upgrading their DSL service to fiber, but the, the less dense it gets, all the same reasons as greenfield investment, the lower priority you are for them. We're working with them and a couple of localities on improving their, their network and we've done that in a few spots. But to be clear, DSL is not broadband and you don't count it as broadband. And so, as far as Commonwealth is concerned, if you're on DSL, you're unserved. As I said, the two technologies that really qualify for broadband and are ready for primetime today are fiber to the home, which is a fiber connection to your building, or fixed wireless. Anything else is really not going to be adequate. If you've got enough towers, 4G LTE service can, can sometimes hit your speed that you want, but usually, you've got data caps there which, which make it ineligible for our definition. So, we're, you know, we're, we're working on it and we're going to, we're going to get your service to your home sooner or later, Lynn. I know it's not the best answer, but it's the best I can give you right now. The necessary step is that there be a Washington County plan and it sounds like the board is, is moving in the right direction to get that done.
Thank you, Evan. Before we get off that question, because that's a really important point because it speaks to, and Evan, the needs assessment, identifying folks. And if we're identifying folks as Lynn as quote and quote, oh, she's got DSL, she has access to the internet, so hey, she's good, that's, that's not, that's not accurate, right? And it'll hurt us. So, speak to that amount.
And that's a challenge for us too because, well, we can, we can leave the leads here. So, the telecom industry has done a really good job managing their regulator, which is mostly FCC at the federal level. We don't have a lot of ability to regulate the telecom industry at the state level. And in terms of their reports to the feds about where they have access and where they don't, they're allowed to report by census block rather than by address. So, if they've got a single customer in a whole census block, they get to say they're serving the whole block. And so, the FCC publishes these maps that wildly overstate the amount of coverage there is. And, you know, the broadband map is spotty, but just to tell you how ridiculous it is, the cellular folks who get to report the same way will tell you that every inch of Virginia has four bars of 4G LTE service for your cell phone. And anybody who's driven around knows that indicates.
We don't have that either.
So, yeah, right? So, then the challenge we've got is we've got to figure out another way. And so, there's, there's two ways we're approaching that. One is supporting surveys, but that's tough too. Designing your survey is hard because, because... Designing your survey is hard, because Lynn, you might have gotten a survey, and before we had this conversation this evening, you might have said, yeah, I've got broadband, I don't like it, but I've got it. And then the county would have been misled, not intentionally, but, but would have been misled about the level of quality of service at your house. Secondly, it's a bunch of people don't fill out their surveys, you know? You can only, you got to sample, and so, it's tough to get good data there. The way we've, we've stepped around it in our grant making process is by creating a challenge process. So, there, what we say is, you know, when y'all come in, ask the Commonwealth for funding to build the network in Washington County, we want you to draw the lines of that project as big as you can. If there's any question about whether or not a neighborhood already has service from another provider, go ahead and include them in your project. And then what we'll do is we'll publish that map, and we'll give ISPs, the private sector providers, the opportunity to challenge portions of that map. And by doing that, we create a business incentive for them, because, right, because they don't want publicly subsidized competition. We create a business incentive for them to tell us where they are. And then they back out the neighborhoods, and they got to, they got to get us a signed notarized affidavit that says they're really doing what they say they're doing, and, you know, wow, they're not always the best actors. Certainly, they aren't going to lie in writing to the Commonwealth. That way, we can figure out exactly where they are and where they aren't. We're also looking at some policy changes that might let us get at that as well. But between now and then, that challenge process and then local needs assessments are the ways we're figuring out the answer to that question.
All right. Thank you. All right, Lynn.
I guess that, my, my last question, comment is, I grew up in Russell County. My father was involved with town council and IDA and things like that. When cable companies came in and put a bid in to bring cable to Russell County, they were told, you have to service the whole county. And so, that was my other question, is these companies come in, just what you were talking about cherry picking, will there be design so that they are, you know, if they're going to, if they're going to get a contract, that they help everybody?
Yeah, unfortunately, when I open up my toolbox, it's all carrots and no sticks. I can, I can incentivize a company to do the right thing, but I can't punish them for doing the wrong thing. That's just the way the law is and the way this, this industry is regulated. And so, you know, we, we don't have the ability to require universal service. What we've got to do is make it worth their while to deliver universal service, and then trust that, you know, these folks want to make money. In the case of a for-profit, or in the case of a nonprofit, then they've got to at least be able to break even when you're providing a service. And so, that's the, that's the way in which we're structuring all these grants. I wish it were otherwise. The reason it can't be is that we can't, a little history, over the course of the 1990s, the telephone companies and the cable companies figured out that they were in the same business. All they're doing is delivering and taking away digital data packets, whether it's voice or email or television or whatever. By the time that really, everybody really realized that was what was happening in the 90s, a ton of private investment had built those networks over top of each other. And so, there was probably a window when the federal government could have condemned some of those networks, and then given monopoly service territory like we do for voice telephone and electric provision. But that time is long past, and it's certainly not something the Commonwealth has the ability to do. The feds might have been able to do it in the 90s, but I think at this point, you know, we're going to have to live with the fact that there's, there's not going to be a utility model with a universal service mandate and a monopoly territory.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you, Lynn. And that, I think, further brings the point home again about cherry picking. You know, if we're not careful, if there's some clusters nearby, we go the, the path of least, least resistance, if you will, on some of these grants, we may leave folks like that out. So, that's where the balance comes in, I guess, sometimes. Do you go for it? You can say, well, at least we got so many homes, but then again, the prospect is that some of these folks would never, you know, at that point, won't be served. So, not sure if I articulated that correctly, but...
No, 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 you got it right. And that's, you know, we're not, and when I say universal, I mean functionally universal. I do want to be clear that if somebody's, you know, if somebody's 20 miles away from everybody else, you know, that was a choice, probably. We're not going to force them to take service or, or spend, you know, 10 million bucks to run the line up to that one house, but we're going to get the vast, 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 vast majority well in excess of 95% of folks.
Good, good questions. Other questions or comments? All right. I'm so glad, because it, it's not really a town hall unless the town comes, and so...
Okay. My name is Slange S. Seymour. I teach in the county and have for about 30-some years. I live in Lowry. My neighbors are here with me. We have zero options. One of my questions is, how often are the coverage maps updated? Because when I go look, I have CenturyLink, I have Point Broadband, and I have Xfinity, and you call them up, and they're like, we're sorry, we're not servicing your area at this point. So, that's been the way it is for about five years, so, that I know of. So, that's my first point. Then I have two or three others, but...
Let's do them one at a time, because I don't know if I've done them.
Gotcha.
But thank you for your question, and thank you for being a school teacher, particularly in this challenging environment. As I said earlier, because of the way the FCC allows internet service providers to report their coverage, any coverage map you look at is just bogus. We don't rely on maps for our program because we know the maps are so terribly flawed. But the process that can get you to a good outcome is, you know, as I said, the scope of work survey that you can do through a local government or through a PDC, or our challenge process. Both of them work pretty well. You know, one of the easiest things to do would be to work with one of your ISPs and just draw the whole, have the whole county in, and then force the other ISPs to back themselves out. And that can save you a lot of time and energy. And, you know, that can be a tough conversation to have with them, though, and when we're here to support you, I went in person to a few of those conversations. I, I'm happy to zoom into one now, or go in person if we can get this pandemic under control moving forward to support you in that effort. But it's a real challenge, and it's, it's particularly frustrating because the ISPs know where they are. I mean, when you call them, they can tell you, oh, we don't, we don't serve your neighborhood. But they won't tell the government that.
Well, they also won't tell you who to call, who, they won't give you a name. You know, who do I need to speak with, or is there, is there someone who, who is over you? They won't give me that either, because I've tried every, everything I could possibly try, so that doesn't work either, so...
Well, for that person on the phone, you know, there isn't a heck of a lot they can do, right? I mean, they're, they're, you know, they're an actual person who's just answering the phone.
Right. Okay, my second thing is, I'm aware of the Verizon Towers that are going across Ray Valley Road, and I was wondering where that money is coming from for that particular aspect? Because I've also called to see if we could be umbrellaed in there, and I'm sorry, we're not a part of your service area, so, there you go.
I can't speak, I'm not sure if Evan, Evan probably can't speak.
We didn't fund, we didn't fund that tower, so, so I bet Verizon's paying for it. If you, if you can see the tower from your house, you'll get good Verizon service if you've got a Verizon device.
No, I can't see the tower from my house.
So, that may or may not be good. It really depends.
We're happy to, and then we've got a couple of legislators here or assistants are happy to, I know Verizon has a governmental affairs folks local.
A good governmental affairs team. They'll, they'll try to figure out where, where they are and where they aren't.
If we can try to get that after, get your comment. I'm not sure it'll help, but we can at least maybe find somebody.
Okay, a third thing that I have here is, you mentioned the fixed-point broadband sites. How long does it take to set up one of those fixed-point broadband sites?
So, fixed wireless is, essentially what you do is you got to build, it, it works a lot like cell towers, except you need more transmission equipment on the tower than a, a cell tower does, right? A cell tower just blasts signal out in every direction, and they figure they're going to find your phone eventually. These need to be angled, and so, you may have a tower that, that'll be covered in little antennas, and it'll serve a cone, each one will serve a cone, and it knows which houses are in that cone. So, it still takes a little while. I mean, you got to run fiber from, you know, an internet-connected node to a tower, either existing tower or a new tower that's been built. And then you got to get the transmission equipment on it, and then you got to sign up customers and put the antennas on folks' houses to, to pick up the signal. That said, it's a heck of a lot cheaper than running a fiber optic cable to every single house that you could have gotten with those towers. So, you know, we, that, that's a big part of what we're doing in Grayson, that's a big part of what we've done, and a ton of other projects that have happened in Southwest. And, you know, it's going to be a, a patchwork dancer. There's going to be fiber to the home in some places, and then that fiber network is going to kind of run to some towers, and there's going to be wireless connections from there out to other folks.
Okay, that just made me think of something else, because when BBU ran the lines down 91, I can practically spit on two of the junction boxes, but they won't come less than a tenth of a mile out our road to hit several people.
Yeah, I hear you.
That last mile, and Evan's very familiar with that, some of that work that was done.
That's a challenge. But, are you down a private road?
No, it's a county road.
Oh, all right. Well, so, that's a little different. So, often what we see is folks have long driveways, or you'll get a bunch of folks down a private road, and then they'll just say, well, it's all on y'all, and it'll be 20 brand to hook you up. And that's, you know, that's not, that's a lot before you contemplate then becoming somebody's customer. But if it, if it does just require a lateral down your street, I think you just need to figure out what, how to make that a part of a county plan. So, I encourage you to be in communication with the board, and then ultimately with this consultant they're going to bring on, and make sure that you're in the needs assessment. And then hopefully by this summer, y'all can, I know it's a long time, but that's, that's just where we are. Hopefully by this summer, y'all can send me an application for universal coverage in the county, and we can get you, we can, we can fund it and then get you hooked up.
Okay, so, my last thing, since we're here, kind of, there's several of us here. I'm kind of surprised. We, as private citizens, I mean, yes, we're here and we're trying to get our information, but what else do you think there should be for us to do in order to increase the interest? I mean, I sent 200 private messages last night, so I was going nuts.
Well, so, there are a couple of things you can do. One is, you know, I always tell people, tell your delegate and senator to support the government's broadband program. That's already done. Y'all's delegates and senators are, are supporting the broadband effort. The, the other thing you can do to make yourself more enticing to the ISP is get a letter from all your neighbors, or as many of them as, they'll sign it, letting, if it's Point that's got the fiber at the end of your street, Point, letting Point know, you know, hey, you got every one of us promising you that we'll be paying customers as soon as you run fiber out to us. That changes their thinking. When they evaluate a neighborhood or a portion of a county, they have to make some guesses about what the take rate is going to be, how many people are going to pay for service, and in general, it's between 40 and 50%. If they find out that down your street, 80 to 100% of folks will, will pay, you're going to change the way they're thinking about your street in their work planning.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you.
And I want to address a couple of those. First of all, you probably caught when I was giving the update about the August 2020 VODI grant that Lowry is, is on the list. Now, I don't know exactly, you know, I don't know if it's a suburb, if you live in a suburb of Lowry, or if you live in Lowry proper.
I'm, I'm the mayor's wife. I'm the mayor's wife.
You're the mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that, you know, we'll keep our fingers crossed. First of all, we're not sure if we're going to get the grant. We feel good about it, but secondly, we'd have to look at a map just to kind of confirm.
Well, and once you, once I put my mind to something, I really go after it, and I'm getting ready to retire in another year, so I'll have all the time in the world.
Well, and then I want to answer your question, too. Certainly, being here, you know, being engaged, speaking, I think some people think, well, I'm just one person, I ain't going to make a difference, this is a multimillion-dollar problem, and that's not, that's not true. By you speaking, we're hearing it, county folks are hearing it, there's some represent, I know I miss Cody Mumpower, he represents Morgan Griffin's office, he's hearing it. So, your voice matters, e- even more so in a situation like this. So, being engaged, showing up at board of supervisors meetings, trust us. I mean, we deal with a lot of stuff, but we, we want to engage with folks, because this is a quality of life issue. It's our kids, it's our future, it's a big, it's economic development.
It's a struggle right now with these kids.
It's a struggle. I could not do, I could not do my job and earn the money that I earned for my family if I didn't have broadband. I'm an IT consultant that works remotely from home.
Right. I understand.
If I didn't have broadband, I'd so, so, we appreciate you.
Yeah, well, I'd Verizon all of my Zoom time for, you know...
That's right. The second thing, I think, is it reminds me of what we do when we have a water project, which is also a huge problem, but Evan, I'm not sure if you cover water, too, but if you did, I hope you do.
Talk to the, talk to VRA, man, there's only so much I can do.
Because what we do with water is we get user agreements signed, same kind of thing. If folks commit to signing up for county, for Washington County Service Authority Water, if they run water lines, we can then give that to the service authority, and then they can use that to go apply for grants and borrow money to build a water line. So, but I think that's great, that's great counsel. All right. Thank you all very much, so, and thank you. All right. Other questions, comments? Yes, sir, please. Thank you, Mr. Ball, our chairman.
Welcome, Mr. Feyman. Dwayne Ball, chairman of the Washington County Board of Supervisors. In the, in the discussions that we've been discussing around our horseshoe, we call it, where we meet, we have talked about the possibility of creating a regional authority with like three counties, possibly Russell, Smith, and Washington. Do you think it would behoove us to move in that direction, to create a regional authority so we would get more traction?
It's hard to say. The, so, there's saying in government, personnel is policy. I think that'd be true here, too. A regional authority that was, that had folks on the board of the authority that had the ability to get everybody paddling in the same direction could certainly be beneficial. But if instead, it's going to be another body that conflicts with what local boards of supervisors want, with what the planning district commission wants, with what, you know, the ISP, you know, you got to be sure everybody's aligned. I'm all for regional alignment, and bigger projects do do better. You know, I'd encourage y'all to work with your neighbors when you bring projects before us, that scores better, you're more likely to get funded. But I would be pretty cautious before creating a new body unless it had a really clear mandate from everybody that it was going to hope to serve, as well as a lot of buy-in from all those folks.
And I've got a kind of a second part to the question. In the event that our county did something, and our board is seriously looking at doing something on the local level with our money, in the event we do that, would it be, I guess, going back, you know, a 1K camera used to be $1,000, and now it's, you know, it's, it's very, it's, it's changed so much that, you know, it's, it's really cheap. And by investing in 5K, or, or, you know, trying to do the 5G networks, would we be more, would we be, I guess the word I'd say would be, would it behoove us to invest more toward 5G and try to push more toward the future, even though we couldn't serve as many people as quickly, to have just a better system in place for the future?
So, like I said, you know, 5G is a long way away for y'all and for most folks. I do not know why the communications departments in these telecom companies are misleading people, but they are. There's a little nuance to it, but the 5G that we're talking about, the really fast 5G, is a long way away, and in any event, every one of those 5G transmitters would need to live on a fiber network. And so, the, what I would tell you is, invest in building out a more robust fiber network, and, you know, where you've got good locations, run fiber to, to towers, and you're not going to regret that investment. That's the direction to go. There's no such thing as future-proof, but, but fiber and fiber-connected towers are going to be something you're very glad you have, at least for the useful life of those assets, 20, 30 more years.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Ball. Anyone else? Any more questions, comments? Well, certainly if you have a question or comment that comes up, we're, we're happy to send those... those up. If you want to send them to the county or the county administrator, all of us supervisors, our emails and our telephone numbers are on the county website. If you go to the board of supervisors link on there, if you go to, I think, government offices, or I can't remember exactly, but it, we're not too hard to find. So, any more questions or comments, please send them our way, any input. And you're certainly welcome to the board of supervisors' meetings, where there's opportunities to public comment or catch us and do some one-offs. We would love to hear from you, so. But thank you for being here, thank you for participating. Does anybody else want to say anything, the board members? And I failed to mention, thank you, Mr. Stevens, as well. He's the, he sits on this committee with me, so I know he's passionate about the subject as well, so I thank him for his support, as well as all supervisors. This is a big deal to us, so. All righty, well, with that.
Well, I just wanted to share, you know, please feel free to reach out to me directly as well.
Yeah.
You know, my email is efeynman, like my last name, Evanson Frank, E-I-N-M-A-N. This is my faculty commission address, I just didn't want more email addresses.
Great.
And I'm happy to hear from anybody and everybody.
Great, and thank you, Evan, for being so gracious with your time, and hopefully we'll get you down here at some point.
Long to come back down. Count the days.
All right.
You know we got faculty commission office in the building you're in right now.
What's that?
You know Sarah Williams, for the commission works out of the higher-end center.
That's right. That's right.
It's been a long time.
That's exactly right, so. I'm smiling, but you can't see it because I'm wearing a mask. So, anyway, all right, thank you, Evan, thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, have a good one.
Have a great evening.